Too many, too many.
Zoom time.
Two, two nine minutes.
Yeah, I don't, I just know that they have quite a few accidents.
He's actually.
Right.
We have people trying to get into Zoom.
How you doing? You see me? What they call me.
Uh, we're talking about lots of there.
Not the bird, the, the plane.
The plane, okay.
DG.
My son's working in business.
No, here. Those are the. Talking with the insurance.
That's always fine.
There's never.
Four minutes. We created.
Three.
Very far.
Four minutes.
He's a cinematographer.
Example that.
He just left. Um, if those say, um, if there's a plane in the movie, then you'll.
Until you grew up in the north, here you are in a T-shirt.
Yeah, I should be on the shirt side of my. She was cold.
He just got shot from. Two years ago.
I, I have been southern blood, so. Sure.
Let's be back.
He just got back. And that's all he said, you know, but. Hey, I saw it.
We have a full house today.
Looks like it.
Uh huh.
Except for Phil, where's Phil?
Oh, yeah. He'll be here.
They're here.
I think so.
He's got two minutes, I think, as I saw him come in the door.
Wow.
No, I didn't.
Well. My. Son, my son. And I. Going is, uh, Paco Man Two. With the world's largest.
Right, oh, just.
And, yeah.
Yeah, so, so before we get started here, we got about two more minutes.
Going for somebody's head.
Microphone.
You have a good. Test it, yes.
Testing.
And make sure that you're almost eating the mic, and I know that I'm the worst person here about that. I will try very hard to remember to do that. But there is good news. I understand, I understand that we, we should be expecting to get some new, better functioning microphone phones sometime in the near future. That, that's our hope, yes, and that we don't have to, like, lean into the microphone every time we speak.
I think I've turned my phone off. It's.
Have you signed into Zoom yet? I'm trying to, and I'm not getting any response.
Yeah. Well, I'm on, and so. I'm not the meeting host, but.
You juggle more.
I can't, no, I, no, but I, but here's the thing, I, I can't see anybody else. And it's set up so that we have panelists that have to be promoted, and I don't have the ability to do that, I don't have an administrator. Capability. As far as I know, and if I do, I have no idea how to, to make that happen.
Are we ready to start?
Um, I think, I, I think that we're trying to address the Zoom because if Tom can't get in, other public, then nobody else can get in.
Okay. That's the only. That, that's definitely this aligns with this.
Them. And here's Phil.
And I was.
We do have a full house.
Can't explain to him. You gotta turn your mic off because every time you clear your phone, it likes the screen. Full house. You think, Phil?
Hi, Phil.
We were just waiting on you, Phil. Now we have technical difficulties.
And so you gotta work, you know, that little saying, you know, sure.
One finger out.
Dollar waiting on a dime.
That to jumpstart the donations?
I'm sorry.
Is that to jumpstart the donations?
So there's a dime show, and everybody else.
Say that the military.
And my internet connection is also unstable daily.
That too.
Nice.
Good way of drawing attention to the latent, his word to the group. I'd you often, I'm all receiving. The plan of sales. And says, when you see. I don't, actually, I'm. We be mad at the. At your house. Random figure on. He was right. And. It's. Just trying. Turn on, turn off, and turn off sometimes.
It keeps trying to reconnect, but it won't let me.
Until he signs in correctly, we can't. It's nobody. They'll do some safety features after we done have to do.
Yeah.
It's even harder.
Yeah, so it's, so, yeah, so everybody's supposed to, who zooms in, is supposed to come in as, as a guest that in, in a, in a.
And then raise your hand and.
Yeah, you're supposed to, yeah, then you can be. Monitor.
Is the recording function okay? Are we being recorded?
Well, no, if we're not in Zoom, we're not being recorded. That's our recording function.
Zoom is our recording function. You're not in Zoom, we can't record. This machine is a host in Zoom and I don't support. I'm not sure if it's picking up towns or if it's picking up. That's not picking up people trying to get in? Um, the only one it showed was. Lisa. Was Lisa, she did her.
And it kicked me out and not.
And I've been trying, and it says, it's not signed in correctly.
It's not letting me, it's not letting me in either.
Yep, she's out now. They're free.
Little bit. Yeah, so it's a tough one because, uh, the location, the taxes on.
Yeah, right.
And it was a new facility and it was being managed by a company.
How much do you have? Was it Bill?
It's like a bicycle. Yeah, it was Jared's project.
I can say in our.
To do some other stuff.
Oh, okay. So, I guess I'd like to be.
Not yet.
It's gotten married to us in fifty dollars. Mm hmm.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
It used to be both springtime. Usually the busy time, uh, we've had really busy. Homeless coast. Kind of goes along with the housing market.
Storage unit. And just a branch, you know, in the same. So.
Hmm, yeah.
Corner. And then if I'm not. Remember this, I've seen.
Hmm.
We've started a lot. And I had on that one, sorry, broke my down. I've done the first tour. Sorry, you're just lying the hard way.
Yeah.
And Joe likes to slide too. She's been doing it. Balances and issues.
Oh, really?
Does everybody?
Yes.
Thank you. Go for it.
We'll open our meeting a few minutes late due to technical difficulties. That's what we get for putting the time ahead an hour. So, uh, with that, let's, uh, do our roll call.
Okay. Joe Mann.
Here.
Tom Solberg.
Here.
Jim Bunker.
Here.
DG Garcia. Charlie Jenks.
Here.
Dell Robbins.
Present.
Phil Foryer.
Here.
Gene Hushel. And Troy Molenix.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, all are present, and we get an introduction.
Yeah, so, um, I just wanted to take a moment to introduce, um, our new, uh, associate planner, Lance Mueller. Lance, you want to come up to the microphone and, uh, share a little bit about your background?
Do you want to turn it off?
All right. Hi, I'm Lance Mueller, um, originally from the Spokane area. I, after graduating from Eastern, uh, I, um, worked for the Coeur d'Alene Tribe for about eight and a half years in their public works department as a planner. Um, I just also spent some time at the city of Spokane in the building department, and most recently, I, uh, my wife and I just moved back here from Wisconsin, central Wisconsin, and I worked as a planner for the Wausau NPO for about a year and a half. Excited to be back here.
Welcome. Welcome. Glad to have you here.
And, and Lance.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna school you right now. You gotta get right into the microphone.
Get in real close, okay.
You, you can adjust it as much as it'll be adjusted, but you're pretty, pretty tall guys.
Did everybody hear anything, or do you want me to repeat anything?
No, no, we heard.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. It's just tough for people who are on Zoom to hear one, and I can attest to that as I was last, last month.
Well, thank you, Lance. We're welcome. Glad to have you with us. Uh, we'll move on to general business. Uh, we need to approve, review and approve the agenda. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? Have a motion to approve? Move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Jenks and second by Commissioner Robbins, was it? Thank you. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oced. Thank you. Uh, minutes from the February fourteen meeting. Any additions or deletions to the minutes? I'll entertain a motion to approve, move to approve. Move by Commissioner Jenks. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Garcia. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, workshop. Uh, we are going through our comprehensive plan update work program.
Well, I was afraid I was gonna overwhelm you with the comp plan work program, but after our IT difficulties, this is gonna be a walk in the park. So, um, just, I, I want to remind you, and we covered some of this in January, but I just want to kind of give you the overarching, um, uh, so the comp plan is required by the Growth Management Act, which was adopted in nineteen ninety. Um, the Growth Management Act was intended to manage growth and direct population growth to urban areas, planning for housing, transportation utilities, and capital facilities in support of anticipated population growth. So really trying to force the communities within the state of Washington to really think synergistically about how their communities were going to develop. Um, there's also a requirement for protecting rural resources, farmlands, critical and shorelines. Again, rural resources and farmlands are really more, um, the unincorporated county, but, um, critical areas and shoreline, well, we don't have any shorelines. We actually don't have any shorelines, but, uh, critical areas is something that we're also interested in. And a comp plan establishes the community's vision for itself, and it serves as a foundation to your development code. So again, um, our periodic comprehensive plan update is, it has to be adopted by June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. We are one of the gray states. Um, and for this periodic comprehensive plan update, we have to address all the amendments to the GMA, and as you will recall, there are quite a few, and I did cover those in the January session, and some of them are a little bit heavy of a lift. Climate resilience, we talked about it our last, um, uh, at our last meeting, and, um, the housing and population pieces and, uh, are, are pretty big lifts. Um, we'll get into a little bit of the rest of it as well, but we will have to update our development regulations, um, in support of changes to our comp plan and changes to, uh, uh, the Growth Management Act legislation. Um, we have to do, we have to, we're gonna have to adjust our population projections based upon where we are now and what OFM has projected, and we work collaboratively with the county and all, and, and the other jurisdictions within the county. I'll get into that a little bit more in just a minute. Uh, we also need to look at critical area ordinances, and that would be the shoreline ordinance, which doesn't affect us. Um, but it also, uh, it also involves things like our flood damage and prevention ordinance, which is, we, we just recently did, there, we have very little floodplains in our city. Um, and, uh, just our environmental ordinances. Uh, resource lands are something that is, that again is looked at by counties, um, in, uh, so it's more related to areas in the unincorporated county. So here are the mandatory comp plan elements that we're gonna have to look at: land use, housing, capital facilities plan, utilities, transportation, economic development, parks and recreation. And while that's technically not funded, or it's, it's not funded, so it's technically not required, but it does still have to be included in your capital facilities plan. So I don't know how you do capital facilities planning for parks without doing parks planning, but it's just me. And then, um, the climate resiliency, uh, the climate change and resiliency piece, which we talked about at our last meeting. So, um, you should have on your desks a large format work program, just a couple of things I wanted to point out to you just in terms of how to read it. So the, uh, element is that basically the category or the pot for, uh, for our, um, category of tasks that we need to do. Um, or the category in which we have, uh, specific tasks that we need to accomplish. Uh, the lead is only indicating whether this is gonna be led by staff or if we're potentially hiring a consultant, so S or C. Uh, the P N column is project manager, where you see blanks, it's because we haven't figured out who's gonna do that yet, or we, we have some questions. Again, this is very much a working draft. And the staff team is also a work in progress, but we have identified some staff member teams. There's, um, as heavy of a lift as this is for the planning commission, it's a way heavier lift for staff. And so, um, so we are really looking at that. Um, we have the schedule from now through, uh, the adoption and post-adoption because we will have some implementation pieces that we're going to have to do. Some, uh, some changes to development code are gonna have to be done within six months of completing the comp plan. And we also have some other things that are post-comp plan, like implementation for climate resiliency, which may involve some additional planning, et cetera. We have some other tasks that we know we're going to do following the adoption of the comp plan, so calling those out now and, and planning for those, uh, outcomes. Um, uh, again, this is, this is something that's probably gonna evolve over time. The timeframes that we've called out here, some of these things are outside our control. There are things that have to be established at the county level for us to be able to do some of these working pieces where we're, we are collaborating with the other jurisdictions to do that. Um, so, so the timelines are based on my best guess as to when I think we're going to have adopted policy at the county level. Um, and so those timelines may shift. Other things are dependent on those products to be able to effectively begin planning. And so, so the timelines can shift a little bit, but again, wanted to take the opportunity to kind of work backwards from the adoption date and what needs to be accomplished in order to see when we really, what, what our opportunities are. So the end is pretty, the, the last twenty twenty six, those items are pretty set in stone. Um, I'm hoping that not much of the other stuff is going to, um, uh, extend into twenty twenty six because we've got a lot, a lot is involved in the adoption process. Um, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Um, I did add stakeholder groups as well as stakeholder agencies, and I'm gonna talk about that a little bit as I go through this as well. Deliverables, where we have deliverables and some notes, and sometimes the deliverables is just the, uh, chapter. Um, but, uh, again, um, in some cases, we have, we have requirements or mandates that we have to meet in terms of deliverables. So that's, so that is kind of an overview on how to read this. Um, in terms of work program element, elements, uh, again, the categories are city and county coordination, uh, public and tribal engagement, population, housing, and community services, climate, resiliency, land use, transportation, parks, recreation, and open space, cultural and historic, uh, economic development, utilities and public, essential public facilities, capital facilities plan, and adoption process. Now, in some cases, looking at the comp plan we have today and what it entails and what the requirements are, in some cases, either because of the change in legislation and the process involved, or because of the. Some of these have been combined because it makes more sense to combine certain chapters, and so, um, so I'll talk about that as I go through this. So in terms of city-county coordination, that's really nothing that you guys necessarily have to be terribly involved in, other than, uh, Amy and Lance and I will be bringing you, will, will be bringing you up to speed and keeping you up to date on what's happening with that coordination. It involves, uh, the land capacity analysis methodology, and, and, and we talked about that a little bit previously, that's really looking to see how much land is remaining and, um, and how, what the, what population it can support and what housing types it can support. So, um, the, the population allocation, which, um, is basically OFM gives you a range of populations for your county. Um, we identify to target population, and then we have to allocate it among the jurisdictions. This is not, this is not a straightforward task. This is an iterative process. We've done an analysis based upon the projections, and we are now going to go through the land capacity analysis. We have to do the land capacity analysis. Um, in order to be able to, um, adjust the population. So every jurisdiction in the county right now is just about to begin or is ju, or just gotten their land capacity analysis under, what, yes.
So under land capacity analysis, are you looking at just vacant land, or are you looking at infill, or both?
Both, both. Based upon, based upon our current code, there are some things that we have to look at. If you recall, when I talked about some of the changes to the code, uh, we have to, we have to allow more ADUs than we allow right now. That's not to say that they're, they're going to be built to the extent that they could, but we have to look at it in terms of what will our zoning support. Um, we, we also, by the way, we have, and, and this is, this is a point that I've been banging on the drum with the, with the, um, coordination folks, and that is the fact that we, um. We have entitlement for most of our residential lands in the city, so it hasn't necessarily all been built out, but we have approved preliminary Platts, binding site plans, et cetera, that grant the entitlement for certain densities. We, we will be able to count those entitlements on the undeveloped lands towards our population, uh, projections. And in some cases, we've seen a lot of activity in terms of multifamily housing recently, to a, to the tune of a greater density than we had originally predicted. So we will be, we will be factoring in those entitlements into our land quantity analysis to talk, to look at what the population is and what types of housing. Um, and what types of housing that can meet the needs for all income levels might be, and so, and we'll, we'll get, we will be taking a deeper dive into this next month. In fact, Amy's gonna lead you through the land quantity analysis piece of it and the early stages of, um, uh, the, the, um, allocation of, of those populations. Uh, or those, uh, housing units for various income groups. So we're very early in that process. Um, it also involves the housing needs allocation, um, is something that's done countywide. Urban growth area will come at the end of the population, and, um, housing allocation piece, we'll see if we have enough land in the urban areas and the urban growth air, in the, this, the municipalities and, and the urban growth areas to support the population growth that we need. There's a good chance that we'll have to be looking to expand some of it now. Um, uh, and then there's, uh, countywide planning policies, and countywide planning policies are gonna be, that will directly affect us, us are specific to population, to housing allocation methodologies, to land quantity analysis methodologies. And we're also looking at some of the other areas where we're trying to collaborate as it relates to, um, both, uh, requirements for, for the greenhouse gas emissions piece as well as climate resiliency. So we're, we're gonna be coordinating with regional entities on that to make sure that there is some alignment with the direction that we're, we're moving.
Um, Mr. Chair, Lisa, quick question. Does, does the state or the county give us an allocation for population?
So, yes, so State Office for Financial Management, every year we send them, um, basically a population estimate, and it's based upon the number of COs for housing units that we've issued over the last year, and it's accumulative. It's a running tally, and they keep track of this. We've been growing on average at a pace of between three and a half to five percent of our population every single year. Now, OFM does a straight line in terms of population, but there's a little bit of, there's a little bit of a, uh, a regressive analysis, but not much. The bottom line is that the difference for us this time around is that we're gonna hit, build out in the next twenty years, and we have only so much land. And we have only so much land unless we include, uh, unless we look at expanding the urban growth area around us, we don't even have much urban growth area to grow into. Um, and that which we do have that's abutting us is either, um, is either tending to, to likely to become Spokane Valley or just be developed and not be annexed or is already developed. And so that's kind of a, uh, that's kind of an interesting thing. One of the things I want, I'm going to go off on a tangent for a second, but we don't own the urban growth area. Urban growth areas are in the unincorporated county. We can only annex lands that are in the urban growth area, but um, but generally speaking, it's the property owner that drives which jurisdiction they want to annex into if they're adjacent to both. And that, the challenge that we have is that much of the area that is um, that is in the urban growth area right now is adjacent to Spokane Valley and is more of the character of Spokane Valley, if that makes sense. The area south, southeast Frag and um, west of Kramer Parkway, that's all urban growth area, um, and the town is, Spokane Valley is already annexed some of it. We do have some developed area, um, there's a little triangle piece, uh, just off of Liberty Lake Road, just, uh, just past our southern boundary that is in the urban growth area, but it's already developed. Why, what's, why did they, there, there's no incentive for them to be annexed in. So that's, that's about all the urban growth area that we have adjacent to us. Um, properties to the east of us sit up quite a bit higher on a bench and have been generally developed in five acre parcels. It's very, very difficult, once that pattern of, of subdivision has been established, it's very difficult to see that change because of the disparate ownership. Um, uh, so it, it's very unlikely that that's going to happen. The other, the other opportunity is potentially across the river. But as I've said before, and I'll say it again, we have no shorelines. I don't want any shorelines. It, it's, it, it'll be an interesting discussion because I do think there's an area across the river that um, ha- is also within the, the Tiff lift zone um, that potentially could be annexed in by either the City of Liberty Lake or Spokane Valley, if it was included in the urban growth area. It'll be an interesting question, we've worked so hard to overcome the fact that we have been bifurcated by I ninety. If we were to cross the river, we'd be in the same boat with only one road in and one round, road out. That makes it very difficult to provide um, essential public services, uh, you know, road maintenance. The fire is Spokane Valley, so it doesn't, that's six and one half a dozen of the other. But for our PD and for our streets crews, et cetera, it does become a little bit more challenging. The question that the community and the question that you all have to ask yourself is, do you, can you envision that as part of your, as part of your city? Does that fit the vision for this community? And that's a, that's a dialogue that we're going to have to have when we get into the urban growth discussions because I, I have a confidence, given who the owners of the property are and the fact that it's in Tiff and left, that, that there is a likelihood that there, that, that, um, that there will be a hard push to see that added to the urban growth area. If it is, that doesn't necessarily mean that we would annex it. And it may be that um, it's better suited to let Spokane Valley in their manifest test if you will, right across the prairie to the, to the state line. I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
A question, uh, on the population allocation and the housing needs portion of it, as I'm looking at the calendar, it looks like the X's stop on September, November. Um, doesn't that play a pretty big role into the long-term plan of this? And why i- is there opportunity to extend that out closer? I mean, a year, you just said five percent growth, a year could make a big difference.
So the reason why that is right now kind of the tentative timeline. I'm going to get into, let me go to the next slide and then I'll get back, can I circle back to that?
Sure, sure.
All right, so the, and um, now where is that? So the structure for agency coordination is the Planning Technical Advisory Committee, which, which Amy and I have been participating in, Lance has, has uh, begun to participate in as well. All of the um, all of the planning departments within the county sit at the table on this. We're doing the technical analysis and making recommendations to the Steering Committee of Elected Officials. Um, and that is each jurisdiction um, has a repres- a voting representative on there. Several of the larger jur- jurisdictions have two or three. Um, and the very small cities, we don't count as a very small city, the very small jurisdictions um, share one representative and they rotate between the three. Um, the Steering Committee of Elected Officials votes on the things that the Planning Technical Advisory Committee bring to them and are recommending as it relates to population allocations, methodologies, um, uh, countywide planning policies. And they're, and they make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners have to adopt the population, the population allocation, countywide planning policies. And those are the numbers that we have to plan around. Now, to get to your point, and we'll get into this a little bit more, one of the reasons um, this, the, the schedule right now for the coordination reflects what we've been talking about. I would be shocked if it doesn't slide, but I'm reflecting what, what our targets are right now. Um, the challenge is, and the, the jurisdictions are pushing hard on the county to say, you gotta adopt this because we can't, we can't move on to things like land use or transportation or utility planning or any of that if we don't know what the population and housing looks like. I mean, it's, that's the, it's a critical p- path for us to get to the other planning aspects that we're looking at. And so um, so uh, the county was initially dragging their feet, saying, oh, well, we maybe can uh, pass a resolution that'll say that this is a target for planning purposes. And Commerce is saying like, no, you've got to adopt it early. So we've made some progress there. Um, Phil, I know that you were with the, the Home Builders Association in the last round of periodic comprehensive plan updates. And I know you can speak to the fact that, of how political this whole thing got. We're hoping that it won't happen this time around, but a- again, um, at the end of the day, we have no choice but to, but to plan around these numbers because that's what state law says we have to do.
Do you project trends?
Yes, so that's what we're, and so we've already, we have already made a recommendation to uh, SCIO. Uh, and I'm sorry, so, so we refer to these as PTAC, SCIO and the Board of County Commissioners. So uh, we've already made a recommendation, PTAC has, to SCIO in terms of the population allocation and, or, and actually, or actually the population number. So we're going with, the state gives us three numbers, we're going with the mid-range and we've got good reason to do that. Um, again, whatever number you go to, you have to plan for your, you have to plan your infrastructure around that population figure and that, those housing numbers. Um, we are now just working on an initial population allocation that is going to the Steering Committee of Elected Officials, actually on Wednesday. And when I get to the secretary's report, um, I will let you know more details on that. I'll send you an invitation if you want to actually watch this. Um, this is, as I said, the land, or the population piece is an iterative process. So we're looking at right now just the trends. We have not yet done the land quantity anali- or the land capacity analysis. You're going to remember it as a land quantity analysis, it's changed because now we've got this housing for all piece, and so the title has changed.
Thank you.
Um, I'm going to keep going here because we've got a lot of ground to cover. Um, just touching briefly on public and tribal engagement. Um, really, we're looking at drafting the, the uh, public and tribal engagement plan, identifying community partners and stakeholders and that's going to, yes.
Who's handling the draft, the public and travel en- engagement? I saw there was a blank on the sheet.
Yeah, so, so it's going to be staff, but let, let me get through what it is and then, then I'll tell you what our thought process is on the process. Um, we're, we will be identifying community partners and stakeholders throughout. And it's, this is likely to be a living document as we go through and we identify additional stakeholders as we get into specific topics. Um, so it, we're going to be implementing this throughout the course of the entire planning process right up until the end. And, but at the end of it, we will be preparing a final engagement plan summary. So it's going to be an appendix to the comp plan and it really tells about all the things that um, it, it tells about all of the engagement pieces and how we engage. And this is, again, public engagement is a huge piece of the Growth Management Act. Now, having said that, um, we have a contract now in place with, we have a contract now in place with parametrics um, to uh, to, that includes a, specifically the public engagement plan for the climate resiliency piece. Now, that is um, that's going to touch on a lot of the different areas here. And, but we're going to use that as a springboard and we're going to use their template to build the rest of the, the public engagement plan. The tribal engagement piece is not a huge deal for us because we don't have any tribal lands. And we already include uh, the tribes in every development proposal that uh, comes in, every notice of application goes to them. We, and they would be included in the distribution list for reviewing our comp plan. But it's actually more critical on the county level and it's more critical on getting them on into, plugged into that uh, the uh, structure for the um, engagement with the, the coordination between county and other jurisdictions. So we're talking about that there, yes, sir.
Okay, so my question is maybe a suggestion. I know that we're, you're going to be approached pretty soon by Community Engagement Commission, if you haven't already.
If.
And that we might be able to use them and use the farmer's market to, to get the input that we need from everyone. We are sitting on old cordillane land right now, look around behind you, that's where the horse massacre occurred, so.
It's interesting that you mentioned that because I'm on their agenda for next uh, week.
I might know that already.
Okay. And so I was going to share this with them. Um, we will, I'm just going to introduce the work program to them at this meeting, but we're going to come, I'm going to come back and I'm going to be brainstorming with them. Ideas for how to build on this. Again, like I said, I want to use the template that we're, that we're using for climate resiliency and plug into that. That was one of my thoughts and there's a, and, and I actually think as we get into these different elements, you're going to see on several of them that are big lifts or big changes, where I've actually identified uh, public engagement as a piece of that. A- and so I think that we're going to have, even within our public engagement plan, we're going to have subcategories of how, who the stakeholders are, who we need to reach out to for different types of, uh, for the different types of um, uh, chapters that we're looking at because it's going to really involve different people. And we want to make certain that we are being inclusive in the way we engage, that we're, that we're recognizing the difference in reaching out to millennials and uh, exennials, that's a word I just heard. That's, those are the, those are the people that were born between the two. So they, when they were born, there was no technology, but they, as a ve- very young children, they were exposed to technology.
But they're the ones that will be affected the most by what we're doing.
Yes, absolutely. But, but I, that's absolutely true, but this, but we also need to make sure that we're reaching the seniors and that we're, we're, we're finding different ways and different avenues to reach all different aspects of our populations. So this is a very important piece. But absolutely, in fact, I, I, one of the things that I do want to talk to them about is possibly even, once we do some brainstorming with you, once we do some brainstorming with them, possibly even having a joint meeting. And so, so that's uh, yes, absolutely. Population, housing and community services, this is probably one of, this is one of our bigger lifts. It's only maybe exceeded by climate resiliency, which I'm, which I kind of, because we've hired a consultant to do that or, or to lead that, um, I'm not as worried about it. This is a lot of work. And this is one that will require public engagement strategies and agency coordination a lot. Um, particularly reaching out to the various housing providers and reaching out to the people, the subject matter experts uh, for low income and supportive housing types of needs. Um, we, it does involve this land capacity analysis. Um, and population allocation, as I've already explained, that is an iterative process. The house, and also requires our coordination with the county. Um, the housing needs assessment is then, once we figure out what the allocation is for the very low income, the low income, the moderate income um, and emergency and supportive housing. And those are all the categories that the state is giving us a projection for, that we have to allocate amongst all the jurisdictions in the state or in the county. Um, uh, we have to, we're going to have to look and see, do we have capacities for each of the different types of housing elements that might support those populations? Um, and so that's, so that is one of the things. And, and we'll also have to look at, if there's not an adequate allocation based upon our current zoning, what can we do with our zoning policies, our, our, our zoning code, development code uh, and policies that would help to um, address the, those issues or overcome those issues and whether it's looking at, we know we have to do the ADU thing. I don't think that, that, first of all, one of the things that we know is that ADUs are not going to address the uh, uh, thirty percent or less of median household income. And it's probably not even going to address the fifty percent of median income. So, so there's a reality check there. Um, so we're going to have to look at some other things. And uh, um, again, uh, once we have looked at housing needs and really evaluated um, the adequacy of our allocation, we're going to need to update housing goals and policies and identify implementation strategies and programs. And then all of those pieces together will be our updated population, housing and community service chapter. Now, we used to have community and hu- human service and community services as its own chapter. But because of this housing for all requirement, um, when we're looking at below fifty percent of median income, where we might be looking at some supportive housing or below thirty percent, which is, which is um, probably being dealt with more in terms of, um, Lisa, yeah.
Quick question. I don't see it here, it may be in one of these categories, but the question is, how do you financially analyze this plan?
So here's.
Forty-six percent of the city's revenue is, is sales tax.
I understand.
So housing is important, but how do we?
So here's the interesting part of the whole thing. The interesting part of the whole thing is that, and we were just talking about this at our PTAC meeting this morning because people are losing sight of the fact that this is an analysis that we're required to do. But there's a recognition that by the state, that we don't build housing. That's a private sector or a, or a not-for-profit sector thing. What we have to do is we have to make certain that our codes are not preventing the delivery of those types of housing units. And that's the, my point has always been with land values what they are in the City of Liberty Lake. Um, that it's, that it's, we have all the middle housing in the world. Spokane, City of Spokane has been working on middle housing since I was the planning director. And they, they've really finally gotten it across the finish line. Well, guess what? We've had middle housing the whole time. And, and we still don't have affordable housing here. I mean, we do have some, we do have some low-income housing on the edge of the earth, which th- there's an environmental justice issue with that, but.
It's my neighbor. Yes, it is.
Well, no, you're actually right, on the two edges of the earth. So, so south Mission Avenue in the River District, um, uh, towards the, our western boundary and over on our eastern boundary off of Apple Way and in Hawkstone, there is low income, there is uh, actually several low-income housing. Um, you know, it's all owned by Todd Prescott, that, that, that's, that's his kind of gig. Um, bottom line is that what we have to show is that our zoning is not creating an obstacle. Our development code is not creating an obstacle to provision, that's number one. And number two, we, I, I think the importance of this. Of this analysis is having a conversation and. Generating awareness among the public as well as our elected regarding. The fact that we're in the midst of a real housing crisis and that we all have to be part of the solution. The piece on the emergency shelter and and I want to pause there for a second. It's on. The work program. I wasn't gonna, I didn't put it here in part because I ran out of room. But we are going to have to, we just went through in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. We just went through updating the the our. Code to allow for emergency shelters in all zones that allow hotels. Because we were required to, we hit, they gave us like six months to change our code. We got her done. One of the things that they allowed was for us to. Limit. The capacity based upon the intensity of the zone. And also to have separation distances so that you didn't get a well. There's been changes to the legislation since that point. And we will actually have to do. A land capacity analysis just for emergency shelters. If we have those two requirements. Now again. I think that one of the and one of the things I can say, given the separation distances, given the capacities. And given the numbers I've seen in the early iterations. We're not going to meet our allocation on it. So rather than even going there, I would like to just. Go in and amend the code to take away those two. It's not like at the cost of land here in Liberty Lake, it's likely to that that we're any more likely to see those happen here. But I think but I think that again, it's that is something that we're going to have to do, but I think. The importance of looking at emergency housing and and again, we're looking at this collaboratively regionally, right? At the regional level, we're having these conversations at the regional level and it will. I think start to really push us towards addressing the homelessness issue. Regionally speaking, I'm trying to figure out ways to address it. So that's that's kind of that's kind of it in a nutshell for housing. Again, I at the next meeting. Amy's going to share with you land capacity analysis. Methodology, a little bit where we're at with population and population allocations. And the process that we're going to go through to figure out if those allocations are right. I will say that one of the things I should note is that how they divide. Up the demand for the different housing types. Is based upon your share of the population. And so and we're looking right now at the methodology. We may be able to adjust some of those. Based upon availability of services or transit, but that's one of the conversations that's. Like literally, we just began to have that conversation this morning with PTAC. So so there are the there is the ability to try and. Modify the methodology a little bit, but at the end of the day, it will for the most part be driven by our population. Allocation.
Lisa?
Yeah.
And in any of those categories. Do the impacts taken or actions taken by the State Building Code Council come into play?
You know, that that's a great question, Phil. It's a great question and this is and and I have been saying this. For. Time immemorial, that the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing. On the one hand. We're looking at changes to our our energy code and our housing code that substantially. Increase the cost of housing and for for a valid. Public policy purpose to address. To address our energy efficiency, to address. Climate resiliency, et cetera. Very valid purpose, but it absolutely is counterproductive to the issue of affordable housing. And so. Unintended consequences, right?
Oh, no.
So the answer is no. I'm sorry. It's not a good answer, but the answer is no.
I understand, but it's certainly something to be aware of because as you try to create. You know, projections and policies and whatever and you're just going. Up the steep hill with slip tires on.
One of my favorite planning nerds in the world said this morning. That this is really just a homework assignment. This is just a this is just a math problem that we're faced with. And he actually likes homework assignments, so he's.
Thank you for the honest answer.
But I will say this about that and that is one of the other things is that what you're going to see is all of these chapters are interrelated and. Climate resiliency, one of the reasons why climate resiliency. Really does. Impact all of these chapters and that and kind of that. That point is a point that we can make in our goals and policies and try and look to strike the balance between. Affordability and climate resiliency and that's that. So those are some things that we can certainly look at in terms of goals and policies. Can we solve those problems? I don't think so. Sorry. I wish.
Thank you.
Climate resiliency, I'm not going to spend any time on because we went through that at the last planning commission. You guys know the 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 key tasks within that. The interesting thing is land use is going to be a heck of a lot easier than you might think that it would be. Because once we figure out the population and housing, that's going to drive this chapter. And so we will have to review our land use goals and policies, update our land use category descriptions because I think that there will be some. Changes, some of which are not inconsequential. Based upon changes to the Growth Management Act. We will be updating our land use map. And urban growth area. And again, I want to say this, we need to include our adjacent urban growth areas on our land use map. That is a decision of the county and we don't control necessarily those those urban growth areas, but we will for certain put it on our land use map. So that we can be aware of lands that are potentially. Anexable.
Lisa?
Yes.
Question. On this matrix. On this chart, I what I don't, I one of the things I don't see is is do you anticipate any kind of an alternatives analysis? In other words, you're going to come up with land use plans, you're going to come up with various plans or a series of plans and there'll be some kind of synthesis. Come to a preferred plan?
Well, so that is we we have actually invested in ArcGIS Urban to give us the ability to look at those. From an engagement standpoint. I think that we may have some options. I'm not sure how. Many options we will have in in part keep in mind. Almost all the residential land is already entitled. And I don't see those those entitlements. I don't see those changing. In any way, shape or form because of the cost of getting to entitle, right? And so there may be some changes in use. I think probably. The biggest question mark is in the River District because they do have such a broad mix of uses. But but at the end of the day. I think that. We don't have that much that's not within entitlement and so there's not going to be a lot. Things that I I know will change is we'll be, of course, addressing the AD news because there are required changes to our code. That we'll have to make and we'll use those to. Evaluate some of these changes. We actually have a fair bit of. Multifamily in the pipeline. And so that's so that is we'll get to. Take credit for that in terms of in terms of some of these housing types. It may not be as. It may not be as big of a lift as it sounds like, but there is a lot of work involved. So I'm not sure how much. There will be some looking at alternatives. We're not going to do a full EIS. We are, we just aren't. We aren't, we don't have, we don't have the time or the capacity to do that. And the reality is that. Most of what we're doing is going to be driven by the changes in state law, not necessarily. But we will have to, and this is really important piece. We will have to bring the community along in these changes and we're going to have to educate and communicate. And so being able to say this is what it is now versus this is what is required in the future. And being able to visualize that, I think is going to be really important, which is why we invested in ArcGIS.
Question, is anybody, are you aware of anybody right now that might be lobbying to have the UGA expanded on towards their property that are bordering?
Yes, I have a meeting tomorrow with somebody.
A lot? I mean, when I say a lot, not a building lot, I mean, we're talking hundreds of acres or we're talking?
It it's. A large area of top of that of topographically challenged property.
Nicely done. Thank you. So so yes, somebody is.
Yes, yes, somebody is is kicking the tires at least to see what the process is. And again, we don't control that process. But the conversation is how can we, how can they bring that to us so that we can bring it to the group that does, which is PTAC and. So so that's so that is. It's more of a process discussion, not a not a whether it will or will not happen.
Thank you.
Transportation, I'm going to try and pick up the pace a little bit because I know that I'm I'm long on it. Network analysis is going to be essential because of changes to land use and because of the changes. And the changes to housing, et cetera. And because frankly, when we did our network analysis in twenty twenty, we based. We did have some assumptions about multifamily. We based that on the densities of developments. That we had seen up until that point. And since then. I've got frankly, I've got almost two thousand units in the pipeline. And yeah, I have a little bit over two thousand units in the pipeline. Bottom line is that that's going to change that. The other thing is that and I think that this is really the critical element. We're looking at. Being built out in in the next twenty-year period. And so now is the time for us to really make sure that we've ratcheted it down. And that transportation, that network analysis may also. Iteratively require us to scale back on what we're thinking about in terms of land uses. And it's going to potentially limit some land uses. So I think it's a good thing to to know that that's happening. Transportation capital improvement projects will flow from the network analysis and those two things are going to be led by a consultant. We will likely use our on-call engineer for that. That's Parametrics did our last network analysis. They did a bang-up job. And I think and I so I would expect them to do that again. Transportation goals and policies will follow that. And then we will also have an implementation plan. I added Harvard Road mitigation plan update is because once we get through this. I would I would put that in our implementation plan for following the adoption of the comp plan. We'll want to. Look at what the capital, the transportation capital improvements are. And determine whether or not we need to update our Harvard Road impact fees based upon our build-out analysis. Parks, Recreation and Open Space. So the Parks, Recreation and Open Space chapter. Was done in twenty fourteen. It was adopted in twenty fifteen and appended to the comp plan. What I would share with you is that it was a very robust public engagement process, but there's not really much plan. In there. It's all it's mostly a summary of the public engagement process. It is super-dated and again, I think that with the develop with the housing. Pieces coming on, I think we really have to look at the build-out of our city and make certain that we have planned for. The appropriate level of recreation and open space because it's certainly one of the things that this community values. This is one where we think that we need to update the plan and. The approach to this, we're proposing to get a consultant next year and to let. Parks and Arts Commission lead this and then hand it off back to you to add to this this chapter. So you will be engaged in it for sure. But I think Parks and Arts really needs to be the lead on this one. And there's a couple of things that need to be included in there aside from public engagement and it's a different public engagement than we might have for climate resiliency. Or for the the housing and land use. We do need to do an inventory needs assessment, a review of goals and policies. And develop a Parks Master Plan Capital Improvement Plan that looks at truly the build-out population of the city. We need to add a public arts section because that is something that. Public Parks and Arts has been very invested in. They have a vision for it. And. We also just hired a recre- a recreation coordinator. And and he has extensive experience. He actually was the recreation coordinator for. The City of Rathbone. And so he's got a lot of experience. He's got a lot of ideas. And I think that. We were very light on recreation previously and I think that we really need to. We really need to look at where we are now and where they want to go with that. And so that so those are the. The pieces to that, but it is kind of a heavy lift because it's a total, it's really its own plan. And but it's timely. I am going to be. Meeting with the Parks and Arts Commission in May to go over the work program to talk about this piece. But Jen and Mikhail, who is the new recreation coordinator, are on board with this approach, so. More to come on that. Cultural and Historic. So we have a great historic chapter. It does need to, we do need to review the goals and policies and we do need to update and refresh the chapter most. Most specifically, we need to remove the legend tree. Yes, it just needs to be extracted from the chapter. For the record, for anybody who doesn't know the story, it truly was struck by lightning. They tried to save it, but it died. So sad. I was I was I was corrected on that. This one's actually a really light. Touch, but I will say that I'm going to be talking to Parks and Arts Commission on that because they have several people who are very invested in. Historical and they've been doing a lot with historical artwork. So I think they'd probably be a good stakeholder group to weigh in on this. And if they want to, if they want to take this one, I'm sure that they would be, I'm sure I would be happy for them to do that. Economic Development. I have talked to Mark McAvoy and asked him to do this one just because this is. This is going to be an all-hands-on-deck for for the city in terms of the lift, as you can see by this work program. So economic development, we want to, the task for that we just need to review goals and policies, but. The big lift is engaging the economic development agencies and providers and then based upon that feedback, we'll update and refresh the chapter. And so this our big stakeholders are Greater Spokane Incorporated, Visit Spokane and Spokane Valley Chamber. And as I said, Mark's going to lead that, but again, it it will be coming back to you for touches as well. But I think that we we want to lean on our stakeholders for that. The same is true for. Utilities and essential public facilities. And I want to, this is a combined chapter also. We had these as two separate chapters in the comp plan. I I think it's so essential public facilities, this is one where we really have to engage the county. This is. Essential public facilities are a region-wide sort of situation. We've adopted the county's policy for citing essential public facilities. And so, but I do think that it probably fits more in with utilities than anything else. Two very small chapters. The big, again, the big piece with this, we will review goals and policies and we'll combine the chapters, but the big piece of this is going to be engaging utility providers. And so that's. A Vista Trans-Canada Energy, which is the gas pipeline that that runs very shallowly. It's right across the city. Liberty Lakes or in Water District Consolidated Irrigation. It's actually Consolidated Irrigation District Number Nineteen, but it just. Spokane County Environmental Services because of course they're they're sewer, these are the sewer and water purveyors. And Liberty Lake PD and Spokane Valley Fire District. We will also be engaging. Liberty Lake PD and capital facilities as well as Spokane Valley Fire District. But again, this is really looking more to see. If there are essential public facilities that they see needing to be located here and we certainly want them to weigh in. And then the twenty-year capital facilities plan. Now you'll note that as you as we went through. The facilities chapters that we did, that we are building, that we're building CIPs with each of these chapters that then feed into this. What's interesting about this particular. What's interesting about this particular one is that we have never done a twenty-year capital facility plan, but I think it's important that we do again because we're approaching build-out. Um, we've only ever done a six-year plan, so that's where the heavy lift is. But I think because we're doing a build-out analysis, it's absolutely critical for us to do this. We do need to in turn, we do need to do an inventory inventory of capital facilities, forecast future needs. We're going to have to have a a section on water and sewer facilities, reaching out to our purveyors, school facilities, fire district facilities. The city's also undertaking a a master facilities plan for city facilities. Like, many of you don't know this, but we literally do not have any more uh seats on the bus here in City Hall. I we can't add any more staff beyond what we put in this year's budget because we have nowhere for them to sit. So I mean, we we are at that place right now. Uh, we also, but we're also going to be looking at park facilities plan, transportation facilities plan, stormwater facilities plan, we've got the stormwater master plan. Those of you who are interested at the next council meeting on March nineteenth, um, KJ uh Hanley with Parametrics is going to be sharing the the capital facilities improvements that we have identified for stormwater. And I think that'll be an interesting one, and that's just going to feed right into this chapter. And then we're going to be looking at a financial plan and basically what is the strategy to fund all these things? Typically, if you're going to do a capital, a twenty-year capital facilities plan, you want to be able to identify potential funding sources, which change over time and those sorts of things. But you want to be reasonably fiscally constrained, even if you have even if you have wish list projects that are not part of this, but are are, you know, if funding became available, this would be a a great project for the city. Um, and uh and I'm stealing, I'm stealing kind of the parameters. Um, MPOs have to follow those based upon federal requirements for uh metropolitan transportation planning organizations. And it's um, we've done a couple uh plans for MPOs and it really is a, it it's a it's an intelligent way to do things, um, just in terms of realizing if you put out a wish list of things that you don't have the the means to provide, it it's meaningless, right? Um, you have to have, you have to have the ability to deliver on the vision. So one of the things that's new with this comp plan also is the implementation chapter and are the implementation plan. And one of the things that has changed, um, and I think I've mentioned this to you before, one of the things that has changed is that it used to be that we had to do these periodic comprehensive plan updates every eight years. Now we're, now it's every ten years, but in five years, we have to do we have to do an evaluation of our implementation. And one of the things that um I hope to be retired by then, but I I would like to leave a legacy for my staff that we've laid out an implementation plan that gives them the ability to rel- relatively easily look at the dashboard and see how we're doing. Um, so uh, housing targets, level of service targets for like parks, PD, transportation, et ceteras, that you could target. Typically, for parks and PD, you're tying it to population. You could, our comp plan right now ties parks to proximity to uh residential subdivisions. We could do that as well, but but you want to have a level of service. Development code updates. And because there are some of the of the development code updates that are required to happen within six months of adopting the comp plan, we need to have those listed and have those prioritized. And so we're going to be pretty busy even after the adoption of this comp plan. And then there's other, there are potentially other studies that we identify um following the comp plan. You know, we have a hundred thousand dollars um in our in our uh climate planning grant that we're reserving for implementation. Now, that can't be used for capital, it can only be used for studies. But the potential would be to look at retrofitting all of the city facilities with solar, as an example, or evaluating the feasibility of converting to electric vehicles or something. I I I don't know what's going to come out of that. Uh, that's that's a process that that we have to go through. And um you guys are going to be very key in identifying that, but whatever. Um, maybe it is just really doing a really robust annex to the hazard mitigation plan, whatever that may be. Uh, that would be something that would go into the implementation plan. And one of the things we know that we need to do is uh update the Harvard, well, we don't know this, but I'm going to assume that we're going to need to update the Harvard Road Impact Fee Study. Um, I think it's a fair, if I was a betting betting woman, I'd lay some money on that.
When will the roundabout be put in? That's not going to be this year. When will the roundabout be put in on Harvard?
The roundabout on Harvard? I don't know because that's a project by others and it's it's I don't think it's probably. I, yes, it it absolutely will, it absolutely will. I included the adoption process in this work program in part because there's a lot of heavy lifts, in part because it's essential to know what you have to do to get it through the adoption process to come up with a timeline. So when I developed this work plan, I was really working back from what needs to happen at the end of the process. And when do I need to have this so that I can get this into? But there's a lot of things involved there. Commerce consultation is going to happen um throughout this process. In fact, we'll be planning a meeting with our our commerce rep um in the very near future to go over the work program. Uh, I wanted to hit meet with you guys with um with Parks and Arts, with community engagement and the city council and make any adjustments that we need to this before. We did that, but it's probably within the next month or two, we're going to schedule a meeting with um our new representative. I added this also, and Amy knows the pain of this. Uh, when I was with the city of Spokane, you'd be surprised how utterly time-consuming it was to format and compile the document. Um, words not very friendly for lar- large documents, not very friendly at all. And so, but I know that it's it really is, it's a pretty heavy lift for a document of this size, although we do hope to streamline this baby uh from what it was. We have to, and then there's the publication of it, getting it online, getting it, getting copies out, getting, doing. Uh, we have the SEPA review, a sixty, which includes some public engagement, a sixty-day commerce review. Um, and again, our intent is to bring them along, all the way along, so that when we get to the end, hopefully that's not extended. We have other agencies that we have to coordinate with, so this has to go to the county. It has to go to Spokane Valley, it has to go to the school district, it has to go to the water and sewer purveyors. Um, there's, there's a number of of other agencies, we're going to have to include SRTC and STA and et cetera, et cetera. So there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of review and coordination. Um, I will say that on that PTAC group that I was talking about, we are working to develop some subcommittees within that. We've already been doing some a subcommittee on housing, a population and housing allocation. We are likely to do another one for transportation. Um, and still maybe another one for climate, for the climate piece. And those may get rolled into one another, nobody wants another meeting, but it's but it's a heavy lift otherwise. You will, we will need to do a planning commission hearing, a city council hearing, and then there's the ordinance adoption and development of code revisions following. So lap to the uh adoption process. Yes.
Yeah, okay, so um. Yeah, questions and comments. Will we be looking at code revisions?
Not. So not.
Let me, let me put this in a little bit. So you you've got all these analysis with respect to land capacity, transportation requirements. And you just said something about twenty-five-hundred multi-unit in the pipeline?
Yeah, it's twenty-one-hundred, but.
Twenty-one-hundred. And, you know, uh, from what I recall in past discussions where we looked at uh code requirements, there is a pretty big cost associated with parking. In other words, how many parking spaces have to be allocated for, you know, these types of multifamily housing?
Right.
And then when you think about, so I know we we have some kind of a code requirement with respect to the number of parking spaces per occupancy. And I just wondered if if now might be the time to to think about that in the context of uh, what is the future, because of, I mean, paradigms are changing with respect to transportation. You know, we talk about quote-unquote, you know, walkable communities. We talk about fewer commutes because of doing work uh in in in, you know, uh in your home. Certain, I think there there are some places where, and you know, where where they have density to the point where they don't allow any space for parking cars. The presumption is that you will use other alternative transportation needs.
That works in a in a transit-heavy environment, we will be seeing.
But I, so, so when you, when we look at land capacity, so how do we take in consideration the requirements that we have with respect to allocating, I don't know how much land for parking of cars? When that paradigm of transportation of the individual car and how many cars you need is going to be changing?
So I think that's a, that's a really good question. Um, I I I think in terms of looking at code and development code, I think we address policies, um, so goals and policies um related to changes that we need to make or changes that we need to look at. That would be a post-comp plan sort of thing. They are, they are requiring us to look at, so first of all, we have entitlements already.
Yes.
So that that that's established. There is, there are some areas where there is the potential for additional um multifamily. Right now, we would have to base it on what's in our code, we can certainly look at that. And we can certainly look at how the evolution is going in terms of transit, how the evolution is going in terms of, yes, we have a very walkable community, our standards are already somewhat lower than other communities. So I think that there's that. But at the end of the day, um, one of the things that that we will have to look at first is if we can't, if we can't meet our population allocation, which I actually think our first cut, um, our first cut looks like it's probably pretty close.
I'll just, I was thinking also of the cost. Because land costs money.
Yes.
And the cost of the land associated with parking spots.
Yes.
May not be the best allocation of that resource.
Understood.
And if you're looking at more affordable housing, that gets back to the basic land cost.
Yes. So again, I think we can look at those policies. And what are some of the policies that uh the guidance is suggesting that we do look at? Looking at reductions in parking requirements for affordable housing, those are incentives that we can incorporate into our code and whatnot. We would address those as goals and policies in our comp plan. And they would be later, and they would be later development code revisions. We have to, we have to adopt the policies first for us to be able to, we can't, we can't. We are, this is already an overwhelming amount of work um to have happen.
Oh, yeah, but there there's so many connections with respect to the transportation plan.
Absolutely, so that's, so you call those out, these are things that you call out in your policies. These are policies, these are going to be reflected in our development code. And you also call them out in the implementation plan as changes that you're going to make. So you can make those, you can, you can, you can look at those, and those are some of the, some of the things that we'll have to dig into when we get into the uh, the question of adequate supply. So I, it's it's a good point, it's a good point, but um the other thing I will say is that, um, as I said, one of the things that that is on there is the change to our emergency housing requirements, that we, I've got to bring that back forward because I know that we can do the analysis, but I don't know what the analysis is going to say right now, so we might as well just fix it. And we don't have to do the analysis. That's one. The other one is that, and I'll just share this with you. Um, uh, we have the deadline for annual development code amendments is April first. Is April first, and I am talking to someone next week about a potential code amendment, so. So we will have, we, but one of the things I am going to recommend to this body and will take it up to city council, and I would like to recommend this sooner rather than later, is calling out the fact that we're going to do a moratorium on any annual code and development amendments uh following this year until the adoption of the periodic comprehensive plan update because it's just not realistic for us to be doing that. And and we did, we did a similar, we did a similar uh thing when we were doing the the um comp plan update in the city of Spokane in twenty seventeen, so.
Lisa question. A couple of times you've said, they will want us to do this, they will want us to do that, or make these assumptions. I can see through the development of the plan that there probably going to be times when we can't do what they want us to do. Like with population or something like that. If we don't comply with what they want us to do, do they send the planning police out after us? Or is there some kind of censure or?
Yeah, so so if I may, so so it, so the the legislation drives this, but Commerce Department is the department that is responsible for writing the uh rules, the WACs.
Okay.
Okay, they're providing us with the guidance. They have a review, they have a review, they have to approve our comp plan. If they do not approve our comp plan, we can't bring it forward, it doesn't count. It doesn't count. And what that means is that we cannot get any state money from any department anywhere until we're in compliance. So it is kind of, it is kind of a pretty big stick.
So that, so it behooves the city then to develop a plan that pays for itself, that funds what the city needs to do.
Well, I think that, so so, yes, so there's, yes. I'm I'm going to say this, that, okay, so I, the big surprise, I I actually believe that this is a very valuable process. Um, we may not agree with everything, every analysis that we're required to do here. But at the end of the day, it helps the commu- the community um define their vision. It helps us plan for the infrastructure that we need as we're approaching build-out. It is a good process, we may not agree with everything that, um, every analysis that we're doing. The housing analysis is not likely to materially, we may change some of our codes, but it's not probably going to materially change the build-out of the city because of, because that's driven more by market factors and by the fact that, again, most of our, most of our residential lands are already entitled. Uh, so so I say that, um, I I think that, um, one of the things that I do, that there is the ability to do is for us to demonstrate statistically. We have to, we have to show our, we have to show our homework, but we can demonstrate if the population allocation in the first round is more than what we can handle. That's what the land capacity analysis gives us the ability to evaluate. We can, we can say, no, I'm sorry, we don't have enough land to do that. And that is part of what drives the urban growth boundary. Some of that will be reallocated to other areas. But if other air, if other jurisdictions also, other than the unincorporated county, of the other urban cities cannot support that population, that's, then we end up growing our urban growth boundary within the unincorporated county. I know it's, it it's, it's, I. I know it's, it, it's, it's, I, I, I know it's an iterative process, that's what I'm saying, that's why, that's, and, and so, so we're in the early stages of this and, um, we're going to bring you along and with the process, we'll share with you as it's going on. Um, and I will send you out an invitation to the, um, steering committee of elected officials, uh, uh, meeting next Wednesday at 9:00 AM. It is a hybrid meeting, so it's at Shadle, it's Shadle, uh, library, but, um, if, uh, but if, uh, you prefer, you can just zoom in to, to watch it. I think it'll be interesting, I think it'll give you a good feel for the first, the, this first basic step in the process, which is the population allocation. And trust me, it's a lot of math.
Is it possible for you, for the department to develop? This matrix is very comprehensive and there's a lot of information on here, but it's, given this type of chart, it's hard to understand for a lot of people how these things interrelate, how the steps interrelate and how they have to tie together and then sometimes have to come back because something changes down the line. Can you develop like a flow chart to explain?
So I cannot because there's parts and pieces of this that are outside my control, that's number one.
But, but it's a process.
I don't have the time, I'm sorry, I don't have the time.
You just hired a new planner?
Okay. I, I, it took me, it, this was an effort to, um, this spreadsheet was an effort to really provide us with a roadmap of where we needed to go. And again, as I've said, this may change over time in terms of as we get more information, the parts and pieces, we will be, uh, the time that it takes the county to get to the population housing allocations, um, is going to drive everything else because it does affect, it does affect housing, it does affect, it actually affects climate resiliency, it does affect land use, it does affect transportation. And so those pieces are outside my control, this was just my best.
Are they on schedule or where are they?
Well, that's an interesting question, it, um, that's trying to nail Jello to the wall.
Because if they can't perform, that pushes everything back.
It does, it does. And that, and that is something that Commerce is at our, at our PTAC and our SCIO meetings, Commerce is very much involved in this, they know the lift that it is. We, um, uh, again, if we, if our deadline slips because we, i- i- if we are unable to make our deadline because we're not getting the information we need from the county and keep in mind that we're actually feeding the information to the county. We're doing the analyses that feeds the recommendations to the steering committee, that feeds the recommendations to the board of county commissioners. And again, as I said, it's an iterative process. And one of the things that's really super challenging about this is that we have large jurisdictions who have the nth degree of capacity for GIS analysis and population analysis and they have different people working on each of the elements and whatnot and teams of people working on the elements. And then you have the smaller jurisdictions that are like, yeah.
Yeah.
And so I've got three people to write this whole comp plan, honestly.
I do not envy you.
Um, again, I think it's doable, um, I think it's doable, I think that the, the biggest challenge will be and we'll push in hard, uh, I, I think one of the louder voices of the, uh, technical advisory committee, as much as, as much as I don't want to be, uh, I think Amy will concur that I, it seems like I can't help it. I try and, uh, I try and, uh, turn my camera off and just listen and, uh, I can't help myself. If somebody has to interject.
So I want to make a, a proposed, uh, agenda change, I guess, Commissioner Mann, could we consider moving the, uh, proposed amendment for fueling station accessory use workshop to the next meeting because we're at about the time limit?
Yes, I was going to suggest that, but it won't be the next meeting, it'll have to be in May because I'm not going to be here.
Is it a big deal? I mean, is it something that's urgent then?
Right, well, and since we didn't start till 4:35.
That was part of it, yeah.
Yeah, that's part of it as well.
It would have been a short workshop, but I'm not going to, but, but it's six o'clock.
Okay, let's, uh, then would you make a motion, please?
Yeah, I'm, I'd like to make a motion that the, uh, the agenda item, the amendment for fueling stations as accessory use, that because of the late start, technical difficulties, yada, 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 let's, uh, let's take that up in two, in two meetings. Okay, so that would be the, uh, the main meeting. Okay, so that's the motion.
Is there a second? Second, second, uh, Commissioner Garcia, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We move to citizen comments or any citizens online? A comment? No? Thank you. And we'll move on to reports, Secretary's report.
So I've already mentioned the SCIO meeting on Wednesday, March, uh, 20th.
Excuse me, Lisa.
I will.
Excuse me, Lisa.
Yeah.
Before we move on, um, I would like to comment on, on this actual plan. It is fantastic. I think that you've been able to synthesize the very complex program into two pieces of paper and that's absolute miracle. I'd like to commend you on that.
Thank you. Um, the other, uh, I wanted to let you know that at the next meeting, Amy's going to be talking about the population projection, the methodology for the capacity analysis and some very, very preliminary, uh, sort of analysis on the housing projections for our city. It's very, there, decisions haven't been made yet, but I mean, we've got, we're using a commerce tool that kind of gives us some different scenarios. See, I told you we'd have some scenarios, Charlie. Uh, but it does, that, that we're talking about at the, um, at the PTAC level right now. Um, the only other question that I had before I turned it over to you for Commissioner Reports is, do you feel there's any value to, uh, presenting at the city council meeting, um, on Tuesday? And if so, does somebody want to volunteer? And if not, I guess we don't need a volunteer.
I think Joe's going to give a report anyway, aren't you?
Well, I, I'm just wondering if, I'm not sure what we would report.
We're moving ahead with the comp plan, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure th- this, this month would be beneficial.
That was kind of my thinking also. What I will say is that, um, I'm scheduled to present this work program to them, I believe, when I get back on April 16th. So I, I am on the council agenda to do that, um, so that, so that they have.
On that, so.
Yeah, I, I, and I would encourage as many of you as are available.
What is, I'm sorry, when was that?
April 16th.
April?
April 16th, I believe it's April 16th.
Is that the third week?
It's the second week.
The second meeting.
It's the second, or it's the third Tuesday in April.
That's.
Yeah, it is the 16th because the second one is the ninth, I know that.
Yep.
Okay.
Right.
That it?
That's it for me.
Any, uh, Commission reports? Anyone? I have a quick one, uh, several years ago, I start, I asked for and started getting emails from the Commerce Department about planning and it's mostly has to do with planners. I get an email once or twice a month and recently back, uh, the 28th of February, I sat in on a, uh, Easter, Eastern Washington Planning Seminar and they dealt with two subjects. One was water banking in Stevens County. The, as you may know, the state is divided up into what are called WIRAs, which are Water Resource Inventory Areas. And the planner in Stevens County went through how they have analyzed all of stream flow and water resource and, uh, aquifer availability of water in the county. And they are asking, they're going to be asking every county to do this. Uh, it was fascinating to listen to, it went an hour and it was absolutely fascinating. So, uh, that, and then the second part of it was on middle housing and talking specifically about the laws that are affecting middle housing. One of the things that they address is parking, uh, middle housing is going to allow more on-street parking than what we normally would allow. So that's law. So that, those are the kind of things I think, if you go to the Commerce Department and find where you can get emails from them, I highly recommend it because it's great information so you can better fill out your knowledge about how planning works. Most of it is aimed at planners, professional planners, but it's really good to see what things they're having to deal with from the Commerce Departments, well worth the time.
Okay.
I have a question.
Commissioner Garcia?
Did they, um, please chair, did they talk about the dangers and the hazards of having more parking on the, the streets, I mean?
No, it's only about housing.
Yeah.
The, the law only addresses housing. Uh, there, there wasn't, to my knowledge, based on what he covered, there was, and he only dealt with middle housing. He didn't deal with low income or anything. There was no safety, security issues being addressed, so.
Thank you. If, if I may, when I send out this, uh, invitation for the steering committee meeting on Wednesday, um, I'm also going to send you a link to, uh, the Commerce, uh, page for the periodic update. There is a lot of great guidance on there and if you want to take a deeper dive into any of these topics, I would encourage you to go there and check it out. There's a lot of great, there's a lot of great resources on that.
Send out the, the, the reference section so we know where to go to look for it?
Yeah, that's what, I'm going to send you the link, it's, got the page, it's got, it's, the page has like all sorts of different, um, categories on one side, but it also has, has recent, um, recent resources for all these changes that have happened. Um, and you're going to see specifically related to climate and housing. And by the way, those are the two heaviest lifts, like those are the ones I would, I would highly recommend that you pay attention to first.
So that's the Washington State Department of Commerce.
That's correct.
Right, and it's well worth your time.
I, and I will send out that link, uh, first thing tomorrow.
Any more comments, questions? I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Move to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, uh, motion by Ms., uh, Commissioner Jinx and second by Commissioner Robbins. Any discussion? We're adjourned.
I just want to thank, I just want to thank you all for your patience with our technical difficulties.